Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this month's session of the Paulding County Planning Commission. If you would, at this time, if you have an audible device, phone, depending on your generation, beeper, anything like that, please turn that to silence or off so it doesn't disrupt At this time, I'm going to dispense with the reading of how to participate in a public meeting. Those copies of those are in the back of the room, I believe, or that are just outside of the door here, and please feel free to take one if you would like to have some light reading. At this moment, I'm going to entertain a motion with regard to the minutes from the previous session of this body. I'm assuming everybody on the Planning Commission's had a chance to review them. Any questions, comments, or edits? Hearing none, can I have a motion? I have a motion to approve by Mr. Henson. I have a second by Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor. Motion passes four, zero, and one. Before we get started, I would advise everyone that each application that's presented before the Planning Commission will be given 15 minutes to present. The presenter, or the applicant, or their agent may have all 15 minutes and utilize those at one time, or reserve some of that time for rebuttal on their decision. The opposition, anybody that may be opposed to the application, or just may have questions, comments, or concerns, will be allotted 15 minutes cumulative time as well. If there's a bunch of you wishing to speak, I'd suggest that you select a speaker so that you can be conservative about your time. Otherwise, you'll need to make sure that you give consideration to the people that may line up behind you. Both the applicant, the presenter, or anybody that may want to speak on the application will need to come forward, sign in at the lectern, state your name, and address your comments to the chair, the chair being me. Are we about ready for the first application? Again, this is a recommending body, so any decision made by the Planning Commission, either to recommend approval, or denial, or some other action, will be forwarded to the appropriate jurisdiction's voting board. The majority of these are Paulding County Board of Commissioners, and they will be forwarded to tonight's meeting at seven o'clock, am I correct? So if you have an interest in the application, you have to be present, or you should be present, if it is your application, you must be present for it to be considered. There's one application on here that will be forwarded to the City of Hiram's Mayor and Council for consideration, and that would be at their next regularly scheduled council session. You'll need to make contact with City Hall in order to figure out what date to be there. So, Mr. Robinson, if you would.
Application 2003Z, application by Lead Engineering Jonathan Jones for rezoning stipulation amendment of a prior rezoning. It was 2006-59Z. The stipulation was 23 back then. It's asking to remove in its entirety. The property is Zoned PRD, Plan Residential Development District, and is approximately 34.108 acres in size. Property is located in landlots 1033 and 1056, District 3, Section 3. It's on the north side of Colbert Road, east of Ivy Gulliver Road, it's in Commission Post 4. The stipulation was in regard to sewer service.
Applicant is present?
Applicant is present. Had no opposition noted on this.
If you would please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners, staff, and public. My name is Jonathan Jones. I'm with Lead Engineering. I am representing Summerlin Homes for the request of the removal of a zoning stipulation. We have met with Paulding County Water and Sewer Staff, and I believe that we're all in agreement that removal of said stipulation is probably the cleanest way to fix this. It's more of a housekeeping thing as it relates to the sewer basin and what's going on in that New Hope sewer area. This is basically a Phase 5 to an existing subdivision that currently has many homes built in called Summit at West Ridge. To get you oriented, it's on Colbert Road, just east of the Abney Elementary. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about the request.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Hearing none. Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
I would ask, before we move on, from Ms. Ashmore, representing water, is there any comment you'd like to add to consideration?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to this application, or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion at this time for application 2020-03-Z. I have a motion to approve from Mr. Aston. Is there a second? I have a second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor. Motion passes four, zero, and one. Again, the application will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners meeting. The applicant has to be present for it to be considered, or their agent. Mr. Robinson?
Okay. Next application, 2020-07Z, application by Terry Dobbin's to rezon approximately 1.58 acres from A1 Agricultural to R2 Suburban Residential for the purpose of constructing a single-family residence. The property is located in Land Lot 298, District 1, Section 3. It's on the north side of Browning Road. It's in Commission Post 2, and it's recommended approval by staff with no noted opposition.
All right.
Applicant is present.
Well, before I call the applicant in my packet, I don't see the applications for me to sign and annotate. Do you?
Oh, gee.
No, I've got that. I have this, but I don't have the application itself where I sign and place the stipulations.
Okay, we'll get that for you.
All right. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
I'm Terry Dobbin's, and we're asking to rezon this acre and a half to build about 1,600 square foot, single-family resident. And, you know, everything around it, this zone residential, except the guy across the street has his land in agriculture. And this acre and a half, I don't know that he even realized he was putting it in agriculture when he did the other. So, that's basically all we got going on with it.
All right. Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Thank you, Mr. Dobbin's. Is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none. Is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to this application, or may have questions, comments, concerns? All right. Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion for application 2020-07-Z.
Micro motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Leggett. I have a second from Mr. Henson. All in favor. Motion passes four, zero, and one. Give me just a second here. I'm going to annotate on this, so I'll remember. Again, this application will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners, seven o'clock. Mr. Robinson?
Okay. Third application, 2020-08Z, application by Longview Capital LLC to rezon 25.5 acres from A1 Agricultural to R2 Suburban Residential for the purpose of constructing up to 19 single-family homes. Property is located in Land Lot 757, District 19, Section 3, and it's at 367 Gamel Road. It's in Commission Post 2. Staff has recommended approval with four printed stipulations, and we've had a call with concerns. Applicant is present.
If the applicant will please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
I'm Jeff Matthews. I'm representing Longview Capital on this application. What we've got here is a piece of property that, after we acquired it, we tore down a hoarder house in a barn. It would have been good on that TV show, Hoarders. But it's really a pretty piece of property, and we anticipate doing up to 19 houses that will start in the low to mid 200s. They may get slightly above that because there will be a couple of basement lots, and they will go over that. But we have, I think we've got a good design on it. If you have any technical questions, Mr. Will Raichstraw is with me here today and can answer those. And I really feel like this will be an improvement for the overall neighborhood. If you have any questions, be glad to try to address them.
Yes, sir. At first blush, the four-listed stipulations that Mr. Robinson mentioned, are you familiar with those and agreeable to those?
Yes, sir. As far as right-of-way and waterline, yes, sir.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Hearing none. Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Okay. Is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to this application, or may have questions, comments, or concerns? As there are more than one of you, please line up at the lectern, sign in, state your name, address your comments to the chair, and be mindful of those that are behind you as far as time.
I live on Gamel Road, the other end where the property is, that they're wanting to build the houses, a subdivision on our street. This is Nancy Bell. She's my neighbor. She lives right next door to me. Mainly speaking on behalf of my mother, and that's her over there, and she lives at the end of the street, which borders up against where they're putting all the houses in. She has hard time hearing, and she asked me to speak on her behalf, and I took some notes on things she wanted me to ask. There is one question that I did need to ask. We moved from Cobb County. I lived all my life in Cobb County. Been out here 20 years. My mother, when she retired, she moved out on the street with us. My brother lives right around the corner. He has about 17 acres. Nancy has 16. My neighbor next, two doors down, has 16 acres. We have nine. We moved out there for that reason. Where they're putting the houses is in the center of our street, and it's probably only three-quarters of a mile long. These houses will be right in the center of our, on both sides of the street. My mother's at the end. She has a big, large, open lot. It's quiet on our street, very quiet. We love it there. Single-family homes I've seen in our neighborhood, and a lot of times, I'm not saying most times, but a lot of times, folks, they're starter homes usually. Sometimes they don't qualify for them right off. They move out of these houses within a year and a half, and then they're hut homes. And then it just starts the ball rolling, and then there's more people just moving in and out of the houses, which our neighborhood is quiet. There's a lot of older folks that live in there. We don't have any kind of crime on our street. We love how quiet it is in our neighborhood. I can't even stress that enough. A couple of other things. I don't know a lot about suburban residential, but I know my mother can't, these are things that she stressed to me. She can't pay any more taxes if her taxes go up. She's on a fixed income, and she's still paying for her house. She still has a mortgage. She definitely cannot, and she doesn't want to move. She doesn't want to leave the area. I don't worry about her being on our street. We don't have a lot of traffic down there. Like I said, we don't have crime, and we have people, look, keeping an eye on my mom. She sits on her porch now as it is, and I don't worry about her. When this neighborhood, this subdivision goes in, honestly, we're not a mile long. Our street is not even, I wish I knew how many feet it is. That's going to be an awful lot of traffic for us. Our street, it took me nine years to get our road paved with Scott Green. Nine years. It was a hard gravel road. Now, it doesn't have... Good shoulder. It doesn't. Two cars cannot pass on it. We all pull over. That's going to increase, I'm sure. That's going to take some of my property, her property, or some of our front yards. It will have to. My mother's on a well now, and I'm sure they're going to have county water go down the street. There's a lot of things that she's going to have to be concerned about. But as it is now, my mother loves her place. She enjoys her place. This is going to affect her greatly. And I'm even more concerned about her than me. Like I said, when we moved from Cobb County, it was busy. I lived in Powder Springs. My children went to McKeachran High School. My mother lived in Mabelton, still where I grew up at. She's lived there 50 years. She doesn't want to go anywhere else. She has a well now. She likes that. I don't know how, or what, or if she's going to want county water. Agricultural, just not, we love that. She wanted to have goats in her yard. How's that going to affect us if she wants to have some goats in her yard to clear her property off? Because she can't really afford to have her grass cut. That's another thing. So, I talked to her about it and told her I would try to find out best I could, and our property value on our street. How's this going to affect our property value? Noise level, I know, is going to increase. People walk in our street at night, up and down our road, I'm sure, because there's a convenience store right up the road from us, Scott Store on Highway 101. And they will be walking at all hours of the night. As it is now, we don't have any problems in our neighborhood. We love our, we love our area. We love how quiet it is. We know everybody on our street. We all know each other. And honestly, that's why we moved from the suburbs, as they're wanting to stick this subdivision right into our area. My husband says he doesn't have a lot of confidence in me coming up here and getting anywhere with anybody. I had to give it a try anyway, to see what I could do, because honestly, I want it to stay so peaceful out there and quiet, just like we have it. Because it took me and my husband a long time to be able to afford a place like that, and we've paid on it more than 20 years, and I don't want to move either. I don't want to leave that area. And, you know, the next step's Alabama. I've lived in Georgia all of my life, all of my life. And I know subdivisions, my husband says, as soon as they move all the people in the houses, Julie, they're going to, they got people lined up paying taxes, 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 more taxes. That's more money for the county. Raise my taxes, raise my taxes. I'll pay more taxes. My mother can't afford it. I'll pay more taxes. I'd like for it to stay peaceful in my area. I love my place back there. It's so quiet. What kind of restrictions, that's another question I have, what kind of restrictions will we have on our property after they do put the subdivision, which I hope they don't? But what kind of restrictions will we have agricultural now? We do have goats and can have goats, and, you know, they're loud, but it doesn't bother any of our other neighbors, and we have dogs, but I'm sure it will, people that have small houses, like it's going to put in there. But what kind of restrictions will we have? Will we not be allowed to have any kind of animals that we couldn't have when I lived in Powder Springs? And we have chickens, and several of us have chickens, and we pass eggs around to each other. They're loud, they're noisy. We hear the roosters, but that doesn't bother us. But we don't want to be bothered, we don't want to bother anybody else, and that's why we like where we live. The stipulations, I do want to hear the stipulations from him. Nancy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I guess one of the big things, well, two things. I have a covenant. Because I have 16 acres, I have a good percentage that's just trees. And of course, that's home for all the deer. But, so I get reduced taxes. I'm going to be 74 next month. My husband passed away 10 years ago, and it's real hard. It's very hard. My taxes are going to go up, and the road sticks. I'm sorry. I haven't liked the road since we moved there, almost 20 years ago. Like Julie said, you cannot, two cars cannot pass and stay on the road. I have a fear. I mean, I drive fine, but when a big truck comes with the side mirrors that stick out this far, you have to almost go in the ditch for them to get by, because they're not going to move. And they usually go down off Hoag Road and go off somewhere else. But it's, and it's very concerning that now there's going to be 19, possibly 19 more homes, 19 more sets of cars. Most, a lot of families have two cars, so you're talking another, you know, 30, 40, 50 cars down this street every day. Are they, is there something in the works that's going to make this road wider to where we can drive and not fear ended up sideways in a ditch? That's the big thing. What's going to happen? Am I going to be able to keep my covenant, which, I don't remember what it's called exactly, but, you know, yeah, so I'm concerned about that. And the taxes, like I said, I'm by myself. I have my daughter, who's a teacher, but what is it going to do to us? You know, like I said...
We walk in our street, we walk in our street anytime we want to with our children and our bosses. We don't have a lined street out there. It's not lined at all.
I do not mean to be rude. I would just let you know you have five minutes remaining, and another gentleman wishes to speak.
Did we have 30 minutes together?
No, 15 minutes total time.
Oh. We thought we'd have 30, since there's two of us.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
So, that's right. The big thing is the taxes, and am I going to be able to keep my covenant?
The taxes, and what are our restrictions?
Yeah.
I've written down the notes. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And we'll address some of those as we can.
Hey, I'm Ryan Black. I'm also a resident of Gamel Road. I've lived there literally my entire life. Like Ms. Nunn says, they're part of our community. We know everybody. She's an elementary school teacher of mine. There's not a single person on the road that this wouldn't affect. Like she said, many of our houses, the road will be cut wider, and we take a good percentage of our yards. I'm aware this is the same company that bought the land that surrounded my home. I live on the very corner of Gamel, by 101, and they've just built houses all around our home, and if this property is handled any way similar to that, it will not be handled well. The last one was built on top of a lake. On top of this property, there's a creek that runs off the edge of it, and if it's handled anything similar to that, it will not be handled well. Excuse me. The property also adjoins public land on a corner up on the side of it, the right side of it. All of that is a public land to hunt, a WMA, and also on the other side of Hoag Road, there's also another public land. If this neighborhood of 19 homes was put in, that would dramatically affect that for several, several, several people. I've never seen as many people on that public land as I have these last two years, and that would dramatically affect that. On top of that, like she said, the traffic would just be ridiculous. 19 more people on the road. We've already seen an increase in traffic as it is, because there's homes being built on Bell and a few on Old Gorbel, and the traffic's already increased dramatically on top of 101, and this would make it a little, very uncomfortable for several people there. That's the main reason we moved there. When I was six, my grandparents moved us there for the reason we live there now. It's quiet, it's a good community. We know everybody. It's a great place to live, but this would affect every person in that community for every reason we live there. And as I said, I mean, those are just sentimental reasons, of course, but, like I said, the public land surrounding it, our property adjoining that road, it would dramatically affect every person on that road. So, those are my concerns about it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Black.
Thank you.
I have a couple of minutes remaining. If there's anyone else that would wish to speak in opposition, or may have questions, comments, or concerns, may come around at this time. Hearing none. If the applicant will please come back to the lectern. May have some questions for you, but you do have some time remaining. If you would like to address all your comments to me still.
Yes, sir.
If you have anything you would like to address to the comments that we've already heard.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I think it was the ancient Greek philosopher, Heraclitus, who said that change is the only constant in life, and change is a universal fear that human beings have. But the change here, we feel like would be positive, because the general area is more in, the 200 range would be an uptick. McLendon Meadows subdivision is just south of this subdivision we're anticipating, and this piece of property is surrounded by R2 zoned property. It was left out when the county was blanket-zoned back in the 1960s. But we didn't have anything to do. I don't know if Mr. Black referred to a subdivision or something being built up at the corner of 101 and Gamel or Hoag. This is, that's not our deal. I don't know what that story is. The other thing is, the rezoning of this piece of property would not affect anyone in the neighborhood's ability to sign up for the conservation use evaluation assessment. You have to have 10 acres, and it puts it in under an agricultural designation, so it would not affect Ms. Bell's piece of property. And, like I say, starting in a load of mid 200s, and I know people moved out of Cobb County, and they've moved out of Fulton County, but Alabama's not the answer. But I think this will be a really nice development. We would be widening the road, as someone said, and putting a flat ditch in it, so there would be more room if that traffic is a concern. But our situation is that we feel like we are surrounded by R2, and that we would just simply ask that you follow the designation that is applicable and present in the rest of the county, which is R2. Thank you.
You may want to stay close by in case there are questions. I've already asked you about the four-listed stipulations, but I'm going to go ahead and open this up to the rest of the Planning Commission before I get to some points from comments that we received. Is there anyone that has a question for the applicant?
I do. The lot size of the houses that you're building, what is the lot size?
With the present configuration, it would be approximately a 1.3 acre minimum lot.
Okay. And the square foot?
Or average lot.
Okay. Is it square footage?
16 and up, 1,600 and up, which is, by the way, significantly larger than most of the houses on the surrounding properties.
Any sidewalks or lights on the...
No, sir. No, sir.
What is the price point, again, that you were looking?
Starting in the low 2s.
Is there any other questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? No, ma'am. That time is over. We're going to, I'm going to address some of your comments shortly. Are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners to the applicant?
Mr. Matthews, which lots 12 through 18 or 19, would they stay the size? It looks like they're larger than 11 through 11. Is that the plan?
Yes, sir. What we're trying to do is minimize the amount of impervious structure, and that does bring your average lot size up. The piece of property has good soils. We have done a soil study on it, and it has good soils. And that's why we're, I mean, we're not trying to max out. We're not anticipating trying to do all half-acre lots. The lots, 25.5 acres divided by 19, whatever that math yields, is what the average lot size would be.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Mr. Matthews, just to go back to some of the comments that were made from our oppositions and those that may have had some concerns, I'm going to go ahead and read, prior to getting started with the rest of the questions, for the edification of Ms. Nunn. Ms., Ms. Nun, the stipulations that you've agreed to so that those are at least known. You can also get a copy of those. They are public record. You can have a copy, Ms. Nun. But owner developer agrees access to the development shall be determined during the plan review process. That's first stipulation. Plan review process is a process beyond what we do here. We are a recommending body. We determine whether or not a proposed use is appropriate for the location based on the county's comprehensive plan and the future land use map. There are other criteria that we use as well, but those are the two primary roles that we are, criteria that we look at. But the, um, plan review process is a more detail-oriented process for reviewing what Mr. Matthews and his company or anybody else affiliated with him would be proposing to do on that road, and requirements would be given at that time for him to be able to bring it up to the county's development code. That's the regulatory function for the board of commissioners, to ensure that a quality development is indeed built there if it goes forward, if it goes forward. Second stipulation, owner developer agrees to provide sixty feet of right-of-way along Gamel Road, thirty feet each side of the center line of the road. Three, owner developer agrees onsite access improvements shall be made to include providing an eight-foot grass shoulder and a two-foot flat bottom ditch for stormwater conveyance. Four, owner developer acknowledges a waterline designed to meet fire flow requirements be installed through the extent of the property along Gamel Road, um, obviously for fire protection. So, those are the stipulations. When you mentioned improvements, you were speaking to what aspect? That was one of the questions. I would just have you please state what you meant.
That, that would be an improvement. It would help everybody on the road to extend that waterline up, and it also would not impact her mother's ability to stay on her well, but it would potentially give her the opportunity, if she should have well problems, she could hook on the county water.
Now reversing, you, you had mentioned, just to, if there was a question about the R-two zoning, suburban residential is the basic zoning that the entire county has. Most other zoning, such as agricultural zoning, is subsequently decided typically by this body. Of course, there may be some that were just designated as such because they were already fitting an agricultural need, but you can apply to rezone a property typically from R-two, which is the standard zoning category, right, Mr. Robinson?
That's correct.
To another use, be it agricultural, be it business or industrial. But most properties in the county started out as R-two, so it's just a generic, fairly generic zoning for a place where someone can build a single-family dwelling. Traffic, um, Mr. Jones, if you would care to speak to any kind of concerns that the county might have had or, or how you would address traffic considerations with a development such as this. Mr. Jones is our director of the DOT with Paulding County Board of Commissioners.
I believe one of the questions was the width of the road and, um, when it was paved. Scott Green was the director at that time, but typically we try to pave a road with a standard width to get two vehicles through. Sometimes we're not able to do that due to lack of right-of-way. This is probably what the case was on Gamel Road. We probably have just prescriptive right-of-way for the most part. That prescriptive means we basically maintain, we may own by usage, basically from ditch line to ditch line. So, um, similar to Gamel Road and other roads in the county where we're, um, want to widen the road, we actually have to obtain right-of-way from the individual, um, property owners along the roadway to widen road. So, that's something, you know, we can look at right now, determine how many parcels are on Gamel that we need right-of-way from to widen that road. Um, regarding the traffic, um, looking at the nineteen homes, um, in the peak hour, that's roughly fourteen peak hour trips in the AM and nineteen in the PM. So, Gamel Road is a local road, twenty-five miles per hour type of speed limit, and I think the last time we did a traffic count on Gamel was two thousand twelve, and there was seventy cars per day.
Thank you, sir. Before you leave, I'll just ask, is there anyone else that may have a question for Mr. Jones from the planning commission or board of commissioners? Thank you, sir. With regard to having goats in the yard, and we're speaking, I believe, of an agriculturally-zoned property, Mr. Robinson, would you care to address the impacts that this development would have on already existing agriculturally-zoned properties?
I would be glad to. Uh, if you'll notice on the, your monitors and on the, on the map that's provided, uh, this property is where you see the twenty-thousand, or two thousand twenty-dash-oh-eight-Z, that is the property we're talking about this afternoon. That is the agricultural piece that's asking to go to R-two, of course. The tracks to the south on the south side of Gamel Road, they will remain agricultural. As far as all the surrounding properties in there, they're currently zoned residential, the R-two, suburban residential. Uh, suburban residential, uh, has, has requirements for any type of, uh, uh, non-domestic or domestic animal. Uh, for example, if you wanted to have backyard chickens, there's standards in there that would allow that. They would just have to meet those standards of that district.
Which is typically distance from your neighboring property lines.
Distance from neighbors.
But those are in place already.
Example, if you have, if you have goats, uh, they had to have a shelter, and that shelter has to be three hundred feet from the front property lines and two hundred feet from rear and side, which pretty much means it has to be five acres or larger.
Any other questions to the planning staff? Board of Commissioners? At this time, is there any further questions that may, uh, need to go to the applicant, Mr. Matthews, from the planning commission? Board of Commissioners? Then at this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to application twenty-twenty-dash-zero-eight-dash-Z. I have a motion to approve from Mr. Aston. Is that with the four stipulations? Is there a second? I have a second from Mr. Henson. All in favor? The motion passes four, zero, and one. Again, this is a recommending body. It will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the board of commissioners for their consideration. The applicant must be present for it to be considered. If you have an interest, I would recommend that you do. Mr. Robinson?
Okay. Next application is twenty-twenty-dash-oh-five-SUP. It's application by Southern Link, H. Buddy Robinson, for a special use permit to construct a two-hundred-and-ninety-foot telecommunications tower on an eleven-point-one-nine-acre property within the R-two suburban residential district. The property is located in Land Lots two ninety-three, two ninety-four, District Nineteen, Section Three. Property is located on the west side of Highway one oh one north, uh, across from Golden South Parkway. It's in Commission Post Two. Uh, staff recommends approval, and there's no noted opposition on this, and, but I did want to make a comment before we get started. Under our current telecommunications ordinance, the maximum that can be approved, I know they applied for two-hundred-and-ninety feet with a special use, but the maximum that can be approved by, uh, planning commission, board of commissioners, is a hundred-and-ninety-five feet. They would be subject to a variance, uh, to go past that point, which they have submitted a variance application, and would this, if this is approved, that application would move forward to the zoning board of appeals. Now applicant is represented, they're both are present.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. You would please?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Clay Brogdon, and I'm the recently retired, uh, manager of site development for Southern Link. Southern Link has since engaged me as an independent consultant to represent them in all zoning and permitting matters, uh, of this type. Southern Link is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Southern Company, and we are the wireless communications provider for Southern Company's three large electric utilities, including Georgia Power, Alabama Power, and Mississippi Power. In addition, we also provide wireless communications to numerous local, city, and state governmental agencies, other electric utility companies, and emergency management agencies as well. Some of our other customers include the Georgia State Patrol, the Georgia DOT, the Georgia Emergency Management Agency, and the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. These entities depend on Southern Link to provide reliable wireless communications, not only during their everyday activities, but especially after damaging storms, natural disasters, medical emergencies, and other critical and dangerous situations. Restoring power after storm damage is made much more efficient when using reliable wireless communications. Uh, Southern Link has made the decision to transition to a brand-new, state-of-the-art LTE communication system for our voice and data needs. Because of a gap in our service, we're proposing this afternoon to build a two-hundred-and-ninety-foot-tall self-supporting tower off of State Route one oh one in the Yorkville area of Paulding County to maximize coverage, capacity, and throughput data speeds in this area. In order to do that, we need the county to grant a special use permit and approve a height and setback variance. The county's tower ordinance has a height limit of only a hundred-and-ninety-five feet. This creates a hardship for Southern Link because at only a hundred-and-ninety-five feet, our coverage would be so significantly reduced that the project would not make sense. During the initial site property research, we investigated the target area for existing towers which would fill the coverage gaps set forth above, and there were none. While we did identify one tower close by, it was only about two hundred feet tall with at least one carrier located on it, such that the highest usable elevation to us would only be a hundred-and-seventy feet. Southern Link requires a minimum tower height of two-hundred-and-ninety feet in this area in order to fill the coverage gaps currently existing along State Route one oh one, State Route three seventy-three, and US Highway two seventy-eight and the surrounding area. Included in our application is a written justification with coverage maps showing our need for two-hundred-and-ninety feet in this area. Also, we have received a determination of no hazard from the FAA for a two-hundred-and-ninety-foot-tall tower in this location, and they are the federal agency that regulates and controls all airspace in the United States. The county's tower ordinance also indicates that towers must be set back the height of the tower plus a hundred feet from all residential property lines and public right-of-ways. The adjacent property to the parent track in which the setbacks are not met are all owned by our landlord, Charles and Phyllis Watts. The actual setback to the public right-of-way, State Route one oh one, that we do not meet is two-hundred-and-seventy-nine feet. This parcel of property, although over eleven acres in size, just will not facilitate meeting the setbacks, no matter where on the property you place the tower. In order to help justify the setback variance we need, I would ask you to consider the following. First, contained in our application for this project is a certified fall zone letter from a registered professional engineers from Sabre Towers. These towers are designed with large factors of safety, not to fail, but in the unlikely event of an unusual weather catastrophe, this tower is designed to buckle at the location of highest stress in the tower and fold over onto the portion of the tower below. In the unlikely event of total separation, this would result in collapse within a radius of two-hundred-and-fifty feet. Thus, it would be contained on our leased parcel and not fall across the property line. And second, this site is rural in nature and located on a wooded tract of land to help buffer the view from the surrounding area. In fact, we conducted a visual impact assessment with photo simulations, and they clearly show that the tower would not be visually intrusive. Granting this request for special use and the required variances would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the Paulding County Cell Tower Ordinance. In fact, it would serve it. The proposed tower would benefit the health, safety, and welfare of Paulding County by providing better coverage for cell phones, which according to the National Emergency Number Association make up eighty percent of all emergency calls. Further, the proposed tower would strengthen the Georgia Power Smart Grid System, which would allow Georgia Power to significantly improve response times to power outages in the area. If our request is not granted, then more towers would be needed to fill the coverage gaps mentioned above, leading to greater visual and environmental impacts. When weighing your decision to our request this afternoon, please consider, first, that if the new tower is approved by Paulding County, Southern Link will allow the county to co-locate their antennas on the new tower at the top and provide space on the ground for the county's public safety communications equipment, all at no charge to the county. This would allow the county to enhance its own communication system without having to invest tens of thousands of dollars in capital infrastructure and ongoing O and M expenses. Just to be clear, the county would be responsible for the cost of their equipment and installation of said equipment, but there would be no charge from the tower owner for the county's use of the tower and ground space. And second, a two-hundred-and-ninety-foot-tall tower would be tall enough to facilitate co-location by other wireless carriers such as Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, and T-Mobile. Thus, the need for only one strategically-placed tower in the area. In summary, we need the county to grant special use approval and approve a height and setback variance for this project. Based on the information I have presented and the benefit that this tower project will bring to enhance wireless coverage in the area for our very critical customers and for the residents of Paulding County, I respectfully ask for your recommendation of approval to the county's board of commissioners for final.
Wanted to make sure I got that right.
Yes, sir.
Uh, co-locates, I'm going to ask a question that may be more, um, appropriate for Mr. Robinson to answer. What is the, the least amount of co-locates allowed on a tower in the area by your regulations? Is it five?
On a tower of this size?
Yes.
It could go up to six.
Okay. But that would be the maximum, then?
It, the, the cell, the cell tower ordinance design says a tire design is to accommodate up to, or this number of, of carriers. Uh, our telecommunications ordinance, depending on the heights, you may end up with more carriers on it.
Okay.
Uh, it doesn't really address a two-hundred-and-ninety-foot tower.
But that in and of itself helps us eliminate the need for additional towers in the area. I know that's a very long way around asking that question.
The more, the more carriers on a service could eliminate, eliminate more towers, uh, small cell or even large cell in the area.
Thank you. And what we're being asked to consider is not necessarily the last step in the process, but they need this SUP based on the height he's requesting, but would still have to go forward to the zoning board of appeals for a further variance. Is that correct?
That is correct. This is, this is step one with the special use approval. Uh, like I said, ordinance only allows approval up to a hundred-and-ninety-five feet. Uh, the second step, which we've already received, the variance application is to reduce, or is to, a variance to extend the height for the tower up to a hundred-and-ninety plus, I think, a three-foot antenna, and, uh, which also would be a variance to reduce the required setbacks.
Okay.
So, a two, if it's approved for two-hundred-and-ninety feet, that means the setback variance would go from three-ninety to, in this instance, to the road, to two-seventy-nine.
And making the assumption, only an assumption to this point, that this is approved and then successfully is approved at the zoning board of appeals, it would then further have to go before Paulding's plan review for development?
That's correct. It'd go through the.
For permitting.
And permitting process.
Okay.
And I did want to make comment because I want to let everybody know also, uh, they did receive FAA clearance letter. Our airport authority and airport director reviewed it, and, uh, they have not, at this point in time, there's no opposition.
Thank you. Are there any questions to the applicant from the planning commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
Just got confirmation. As I'm on the airport authority, uh, we, we have a couple pilots on there. We get total air, we'll be at the, and we'll go get approved. We were okay.
Thank you, Mr. Brogdon. You may take your seat. You still have some time remaining if something should come up. Is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion for application twenty-twenty-dash-zero-five-dash-SUP.
I have a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Leggett. Have a second from Mr. Henson. All in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one. Again, it will be forwarded to the board of commissioners meeting for their consideration tonight at seven.
Okay. So, just make, make sure I'm clear. So, we need to be here tonight for the board of commissioners, and then there's a subsequent step after that to the board of zoning appeals that we have to go through? I just want to make sure I'm clear on what our steps are.
Yes, we're a recommending body to the board of commissioners. Yes, we're recommending body to the Board of Commissioners. From that point, assuming that they approve it, then you will, you already have the application going forward, but check with Mr. Robinson for the Zoning Board of Appeals for the variance considerations. Mr. Robinson?
Right. If the Board of Commissioners approves the special use permit tonight, then the variance application will become active and be scheduled at this point in time, probably to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting in the second week in August.
Okay.
But I will let you know, and we'll get the signs and everything rolling on.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Robinson?
Okay, next application, 2020-09Z, application by Fleming and Associates, Inc., to rezone 4.411 acres from A1 agricultural to R2 suburban residential for the purpose of constructing two single-family homes. Property is located in Land Lot 1289, District 2, Section 3. It's on the north side of Nebo Road across from Stone Creek Drive. It's in Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended approval with one stipulation. We've received no opposition on this one, and the applicant is present.
If you please sign in, state your name, address your comments to the chair.
My name's Keith Fleming. I'm just here for the hearing with no opposition. I guess we're clear to move forward on y'all's behalf.
All right. You want to simply state what you're proposing to do? I know it's written down, but.
Oh, rezone the 4.11 acres of land from A1 to R2.
To R2.
Yes, sir.
For a single-family dwelling?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you, are you familiar with the one stipulation that staff has recommended you're agreeable?
I agree with it.
There any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
This is, this word will still be accessed, those homes behind.
Yes, sir.
On the same roof.
Yes, sir.
Like it's the only access to them.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, this is two, right?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Fleming. May I take your seat? Is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to this application? May have questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion, application 2020-09-Z.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve with the one stipulation, Mr. Henson?
Stipulation.
By Mr. Henson?
Sorry.
I have a second from Mr. Aston. All in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one. And again, this will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners meeting tonight at 7:00. You will need to be present as the applicant for it to be considered. And we have the final application. Mr. Robinson?
Okay, final application is 2020-06-SUP, City of Hiram, application by Darian Properties, LLC and High Spirits Package, Inc., for a special use permit to transfer business currently owned and operated by Cronos Development, LLC, and transfer said special use permit to acquire the foregoing and continued operation to operate the package store located in Land Lot 593, District 19, Section 2. This property is located at 5425 Windy Bagwell Parkway within the City of Hiram, as Commission Post 3, and we recommend approval.
Is the applicant present?
Representative is present.
The representative is present. The ubiquitous representative.
The what kind of representative? Good afternoon. My name's Joel Larkin. I'm with Sams Larkin and Huff and Marietta, and I was home board with the COVID virus, so I thought I'd bring this piece of property back to you. Most of you were on the board about three years ago when we first brought this property to you. At that time, it was a closed-down Brewster's Ice Cream Shop and a car wash, and Cronos Development proposed to combine the two tracks and develop a 12,000-square-foot package store. It was a long process, but they successfully opened that project approximately a year ago, and it's been operating very well since. Cronos Development now has a contract to sell the real estate and the store to new owners, and under the City of Hiram ordinance, we're required to get approval for the location again to transfer it to the new owners. Assuming approval is obtained, then we'll go to the City of Hiram for final approval, and then the actual property owners or purchasers will also separately have to file alcohol licenses, at which time they'll be considered personally. But today, we're here to look at the site and determine the suitability of the site to operate as a package store. And on that issue, this board has previously determined that it's very well positioned for that, and we're proud of the facility that has opened and is operating without incident, and we're happy to respond to any questions that you have.
Well, not that I'm going to indicate any kind of a bias for or against the site. I will say it did turn out to be a very nice development.
Thank you.
Aesthetically. Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions? And although I work for the City of Hiram, I will defer to my associate in the back. Mr. Allen, do you have anything you would like to ask from the point of view of City of Hiram?
Where's Sikes, man?
Thank you, Mr. Larkin.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2020-06-SUP for the City of Hiram. I have a motion to approve from Mr. Aston. I have a second from Mr. Henson. All in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one. And this application will be forwarded to the City of Hiram and be placed on an agenda based on their determination of appropriate timing for advertising. You'll need to be in contact with the city clerk or Mr. Allen in the back of the room to help you figure out what date that will be. And last item on the agenda, when it's forwarded to the City of Hiram, the applicant must be present for it to be considered, just as it is for the Board of Commissioners. Last item for consideration on the agenda is a zoning ordinance text amendment. I'm assuming this is initiated by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners, so, Mr. Robinson, would you please?
That is correct. The zoning ordinance text amendment, the text amendment is in regards to Article 8, Section V, R-55 Active Adult Residential District. And I just want to say thank you, Ann, my director, Ann Lippman. She's helping out with her maps today, and we're trying to keep some social distance, so I'm going to do the best I can to review the recommended changes. As most of you have been here on this board over the past several years, the R-55 Active Adult Residential District came into existence on June 26, 2018. Since then, we've had nine rezoning applications for seven developments, which has, at this point in time, estimated 1,027 proposed lots. At this time, there are, these developments are in different stages, but there's been some concerns regarding lot sizes and such, and this is a recommendation to expand the lot sizes from 4,800 square feet to 8,000 square feet. I mean, yes. And to set the minimum width at the building line from 40 to 50 feet. And some of the other highlights in there would add a 50-foot buffer along adjacent two county roads and the remaining rounded property perimeters. Front yard setbacks would change from five feet to 10, and side yards from five feet to eight. At this time, like I said, we've got several under construction at different phases within the county, and we don't really have a product that's really on the ground yet, but these are some changes that we want to take a look at doing and recommend at this time. And I'm trying to think if there's anything else.
I have noticed in some of the dwellings that I've looked at that they've had, they've been real challenged on understanding one under-stirred buffer, man, so.
Yeah. Well, I think some of that, when you, we've had a couple out there that's, did a lot of grading, and there were some that got into a buffer area. And so, yeah, you know, it's just some changes that may require a different type product or such, but at this time, with what we've seen out there so far, we, you know, we need to see what's going to happen with what's going on now. I mean, we don't have anything out there, but we think at this point in time, the 8,000 is a pretty good number.
All right. Being that this is an ordinance change for Paulding County, is there any comment from our county attorney that you would like to make regarding this?
None, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
And that is correct, Mr. Chairman. It only is a unincorporated Paulding County district.
Right. Are there any questions to the staff from the Planning Commission?
Chris, on the R-55, we had some previous discussions on some of the other previous ordinance about one and two car garages. Where does that stand, though? Is it still, will you clarify that?
At this time, in all, all single-family detached and attached cottage dwellings shall contain an attached garage. A minimum of two parking spaces per unit is required. The parking spaces must be in the driveway or garage. Dwellings over 1,400 square feet must have a double-car garage. No more than 30% of the dwellings in a subdivision may have a single-car garage, and that was the update we had back in January 2020.
That is not currently up for amendment.
And that is, that is not a change on that requirement.
Are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Chris, what was the setback you did?
On the front setback, it would go on the, on the, make sure I'm saying it right. The single-family attached detached dwellings would go a minimal lot size of 8,000 square feet with a 50-foot building line. Minimal front yard setback is 10 feet, which was five feet, and the side yard would go up from, to eight feet from five feet. And that's on the detached product. On the.
It would be ten feet.
It would be off of any right-of-way, private or public right-of-way, and most of these is.
Get a car in for the garage, get a little sample. Be close.
Let me go back. Front-facing garages, so the house can be 10 feet from the property line on the front, but the garage will have to remain 15. That standard's not changing. So it would be, house could be up here, and the garage is five feet setback.
Depends on if you're driving a Prius or a Continental.
Exactly.
Cadillac, you're in trouble. Prius, you'll be fine.
At this time, should I, well, I'm going to ask you, may I open this up to questions from public?
Exactly. That's what, just open for a public hearing.
There we go. So if there were any further comments you wanted to make.
Oh, I did want to make one more comment. If this is approved, we did insert a text, this text amendment that it would be adopted, of course, today if the Board of Commissioners chooses so, and that any property out there that was prior zoned R-55 or has been submitted at this time would remain vested under the current standards. And so, that means the projects out there right now are, can continue what they, same under the same, the old R-55, and have an application that's pending for next month.
I've had several similar conversations with your county attorney over such matters.
Yes.
When we talk about setbacks like this, are we talking about from the building wall? Are we talking about from overhangs? Or I think we have an issue with something like that.
Yeah, that's one thing you have to keep in mind in the building. The setbacks for us is from the wall, but we always got to let, make sure that the builder understands that if the overhang, depending on how close the overhang is to the next building over, overhang, it gets into fire codes, where they have to write the walls.
That is handled through a plan review process.
It's handled in the, because these products, we, you know, we want to take a look at any attached products out there.
But it is there.
And it is there in the permitting process, but that is a good question we have. We do try and keep eye, because it can be misleading on some setbacks for zoning and setbacks for building codes.
Okay. So at this time, I'm opening the floor up to anybody who may have public comment. Anybody wishing to speak, please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair. Same speaking time collectively as in existence, it's 15 minutes, so please be mindful of anybody standing behind you.
Good afternoon. My name's Joel Larkin, and I'm with the firm Sams Larkin and Huff and Marietta. We became aware, and as some of you know, I was involved in the, some of the committee meetings that resulted in the initial adoption of the R-55 ordinance. The Paulding County Development staff held a number of meetings with interested developers and builders and other folks who are active in the industry, and as a result of those meetings, they generated the initial R-55 ordinance, including the setbacks and the lot sizes and everything that they're proposing to change today. We became aware of this proposed change kind of by accident about a week ago, and I've made some effort to determine exactly what the concerns are that are causing the county to reconsider these various measurements and requirements. And quite honestly, I was hoping to hear more today. All we've been able to ascertain is that there's some general concerns, and the feeling I kind of get is that the concern is that we have enough of this product. And, you know, if that's the case, it is something that has to be zoned in order to build it, so there is no automatic right, anybody who hasn't come before you has, to build this product. So if the concern is that maybe we're getting too many of these too fast, I would urge that you consider handling it that way, because these criteria were carefully thought out and they're market-tested, and the product that all these people build fits these requirements. And I think just to, to change them without maybe giving it further thought, we'll probably be ill-advised, and we'll probably be back here again today. We have reached out to, to the Board of Commissioners and to staff, and we think it would be prudent, and more so today after hearing the concern. What I heard said was, we've got 1,000 of these, there's really not many on the ground. We don't really know what's going to happen, and we're going to wait and see. You know, if that's the case, then I would request and urge that we do exactly that, that we not amend the ordinance at this time, that we wait and see, and we would invite all the, all the Planning Commissioners and all the members of the Board of Commission to come out and look at the projects under development, meet with the developers, see what the product looks like, see how the property lines and the setbacks work, and then if there's real concerns after that, then maybe bring this back at that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in your, in your packets, there was an email submitted by Mr. Larkin that's in your packets.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Romine. I'm a co-founder of Wintergreen Development and Winsong Properties. We were one of the developers and builders who participated in the writing of the original ordinance. We're about to come up on two years since that time, and as was said before, there are lots of projects in the works, but no houses have closed yet, or I don't think any final plats have been approved on the initial projects that were done. So I would agree with what Mr. Larkin was saying, is it's a little premature to redesign this car before it comes off the assembly line. I do want to thank you first, and the Commissioners also, for giving us the opportunity. I do want to thank you first, and the commissioners also, for giving us the opportunity to build active adult housing in Paulding County. I personally have been in home building for, development for 45 years. 25 of those years has been exclusively building for the active adult buyer, which is a little different from the senior buyer. Senior usually is in congregate housing and so on. But I've been building single-family detached, active adult in the Atlanta area for over 25 years. So I do have a pretty good sense of what the customers want and what we have tried to give them, and they have been very receptive to that. I don't know if any of you have been over to Eccles Farm. If you drive Macklin Road, you can help, but notice that it's been something going on. It's been going on for a long time. It's been very, very challenging site. But we have our entrance, we're building our models, we have a sales trailer in there, clubhouse is coming out of the ground. Just in the first phase there, we're putting almost a million dollars into amenities, which is very attractive to our home buyers. Our, our people want to be connected and they want to be together. And what's really interesting is that here with this pandemic, the question is, will they want to be in our communities or are they going to want to be somewhere else? I think the future, at least for the next 10 or 20 years, is that people are going to want to be single-family detached, but they want to be in a place where they can relate to other folks. So I, I was a little surprised when I saw this suggested rewrite, and I really was struggling to understand what we were trying to accomplish. And I think that's always important to understand. And, and I know I can't stand here, ask a question, expect an answer immediately, but, but I really think we should think about what we're trying to accomplish. As Joel said, if you want to have fewer of these in the future, then you don't have to rezone them. If there's a fear that you can't not rezone them, other counties have put in stipulations for accepting this kind of housing based on proximity to certain things or frontage on collector roads and so on, so you don't have a dense community back in the woods somewhere. So there are lots of different ways to do that. The, the details, of course, for us are critically important. So, you know, most of our lots, in fact, 85% of our lots right now at Eccles Farm are planned to be 50 feet wide. So you'd say, well, great, Steve, you obviously agree with 50 feet. 50 feet's okay, we've done a lot of 50-foot product. But when you change to an eight-foot building setback line on the side, that shrinks the house on the lot. So now we have a 34-foot lot, a 34-foot building pad, with a 20-foot garage, you have a 14-foot house. That is really ugly. I mean, and I struggle to try to figure out if we're trying to stay, we want, have affordable housing or we're trying to go upscale. We're doing this balancing act all the time. We expect that by the time we're done with our 250, 260 homes out there, that the average price will be between 320 and 360, which means there'll be over $80 million worth of housing there and that many starts. I think that's going to be a good thing for Paulding County. As you know, we're on Macklin Road, which is state highway. We're really close to Cobb County. We're not having a negative impact on the county. I think it's positive. So you wonder if, you're probably asking yourself, why is this guy standing up to talk about this when there is a stipulation in the, in this presentation that would allow us to continue doing what we're doing? And I appreciate that very much, that you would consider not changing the rules on us at this point in time. But I'm also standing here as somebody who's been in this business for 25 years, knows the market, knows the product, knows every inch of it. And I want to see you have a really good ordinance that works in the long term. Not for me, because I'm about to retire, if you can't tell. You're probably thinking I shouldn't even be standing here. But I really think it's important that you not rush to make some changes unless you have clearly defined what you're trying to accomplish and make sure that those changes will affect the change you want. And that we might want to continue to talk about it. And also, wait until some of these houses close and you get to see the finished product. There are two communities. The first one is up on Frye Road, and I think that's D.R. Horton. And they have their model under construction. We seem to be a little bit ahead of them on terms of construction. And then there's another one listed here that we zoned, Wintergreen Development, we zoned it, but we did not close on that property. But those are being done as retirement communities. So I had written a letter and Sir Larkin passed it on to the board of commissioners, but I know that you all have not seen it. If you feel a need to act on this right away, like today, I'd like to throw out some suggestions. One is that, excuse me, just a second here. I've got a lot of notes here. Okay. That instead of going from 4,800 square feet to 8,000, that you consider going to 6,000 square feet. We have never needed more than 6,000 feet to build these houses on. Part of the thing is that the homeowners association takes care of all the yards. We don't want to bankrupt the homeowners association having to take care of more area. So I would suggest that as a, as a middle ground. I would say that the building width, I think it's important that the house be at least 36 feet wide, not 34 feet wide. And so you need an extra foot on each side for the overhangs. Again, it's all in the inches. And so I'm suggesting if you feel a desperate need to change the lot width, then go from 40 to 46 feet. There is a reason why we suggested, and it was approved, to have a five-foot front building setback line with a 15-foot building setback line for the garage. If you have 15 feet plus the six feet that you already have because of where the right of way is relative to the curb, you have 21 feet to park your, your F-150, okay? So it will fit there. It's off the sidewalk. But the reason we like to have the house closer to the street is that people like to sit on their front porch and they want to talk to the people on the sidewalk. It's different than in a typical suburban situation where the house is 50 feet back, people pull into their garage and never see each other. But our people, once they retire, they want to be engaged with each other. So that's why the house is pulled up forward. I don't think there's anything to be gained by pushing it back another five feet. It just puts more distance, it's beyond social distancing, by the way. But it gives, it becomes, makes the conversation much more difficult. You sort of yell at each other. And as I said, as far as the side setback is concerned, going from five feet to eight feet, again, I don't know that anything is gained by that. We have to meet the fire code. Fire code is eve to eve, it's not foundation to foundation. So we have to make that work. And they, they really control. But I would suggest that there's no need for that. And so I would leave that one alone. The, I did not mention in my memo, the 50-foot undisturbed buffer, I think is really onerous, especially because it says, well, if there's not enough buffer in the undisturbed buffer, then you need to buffer it. But why is it 50 feet? Because in 25 feet, you can certainly plant plenty of buffer, fence it and so on, and, and create that separation. So what I'm coming to you for is, is number one, I thank you for considering the possibility of leaving the existing communities that have been zoned to continue the way they are. Okay? That's number one. But I really think that we can do better. We, as in, I'm heavily vested in Paulding County. We can do better in modifying this to really serve the needs of the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Somebody else would like to speak regarding the text amendment? If you would please sign in, state your name and address your comments to the chair.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Deborah Seaver, and I just want to say thank you all for bringing some, you know, higher standards maybe to the active adult community, you know, looking around and going around, driving to the different counties, you know, taking a look and seeing what other counties are doing and then coming, bringing it back to our county is always a good thing. And this gentleman, Mr. Aston, had mentioned, well, first of all, let me, let me first of all state that Deborah Seaver, Paulding County resident. Now, these gentlemen who came forward, they do not live in Paulding County and they are not Paulding County residents. When I say I have a, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of that. When I say I have a vested interest, I don't have invested interest, I have a vested interest in trying to do what's best here. And with regards to these additional changes, I really like these changes, but I'm going to mention something that wasn't mentioned, that Mr. Aston did mention. And so I was here at the original zoning with regards to the one-car garage versus the two-car garage. And so I did miss the zoning, which came back and they did give them, they gave them the one-car garage. Now, when the zoning committee, when the zoning board came up and when the zoning board voted to allow the one-car garage for the smaller homes, they walked away. I did ask the gentleman, one of his, the people who worked for him from Windsong, I asked for a picture of a property that they have recently built that showed a one-car garage. Because one of the commissioners was a little concerned that a smaller home with a two-car garage would look a little awkward. So then I thought, well, let's see a picture, right? Let's see what this looks like. Maybe we can drive by, do you have a picture? The gentleman came back and said, I don't have a picture of one that's been built recently. I said, how come? He said, because we haven't built one recently. I said, how come? He said, because Cobb County and Cherokee County does not allow a one-car garage. So I was a little concerned that Paulding County would allow an inferior product that Cobb County or Cherokee County did not. Now, if you look at Windsong's product in Seven Hills, my husband's a commercial developer of, we've been married 39 years, so probably 43 years. And when we were driving through, he looked at that product and his response was, wow, wow, they build a great product. Unfortunately, I'm concerned...
Wait up two minutes, just...
Okay, that that might be changed. And so then I just, so I'm just coming before you to say, if you're making changes and if you're considering a few changes, if at all possible, could we consider to bring that to the board to say, could we go back to that two-car garage that I think would keep us on par with what's going on with Cobb County, what's going on with Cherokee County, so we can have as great of a county, if not better, than all of our surrounding counties? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Seaver. This time, I think I will go back to Mr. Robinson. There have been comments made throughout the questions or public comment. We've closed public comment portion of the meeting. Is there anything that you would like to address?
I just wanted to, what was discussed, you did have a copy of that in your packet about some of the recommendations that they are, they provided that they would, would like to see. At this time, what Ms. Seaver was, had brought up is one of the Windsong design under the OPRD in the, the Seven Hills community. And that was a nice product and that was...
Was to the R-55, it probably is, isn't it?
The, the, Windsong in Seven Hills is PRD zoned, which is a minimal 8,000 square foot lot. And so this would bring the R-55 comfortable to that, that type of lot size.
I mean, why, why could we not go back to the two-car garages? It looks to me like it'd be a lot better.
The, the advertisement for this public hearing was that to consider amendments to the R-55 zoning district. And so, Jason, I want to make sure, but it didn't specify exactly the, what was being changed. It just was advertised that there would be possible amendments to the ordinance in the R-55.
Yes, I don't, I don't believe it specified the... I don't believe it specified specifically, don't mean to be redundant there, I don't believe it stated exactly what was going to be proposed in terms of the R-55 amendment today. If there are new proposals that are substantially different than the current draft, would recommend it would be wise to have a, have a draft in place and a hearing on that draft prior to moving forward with a new idea that originates today. Now, if it's merely an amendment or a change to the existing proposal that's on the table today, that is, that is a different matter. But if it's a brand-new idea that's separate and apart from what the county proposed today, I think the wiser course would be to schedule another public hearing on that. You always have the option of tabling these for further analysis and consideration as well.
So, so the two-car garage, is that a new idea or is that just an amendment?
That is a different idea than what came up today, what was intended for today. Certainly was a previous requirement that I believe was changed.
We're, at this point, with the number of houses that we have approved so far, we're looking at 300, over 300 single-car garages in these developments. So that's, that's substantial amount. And I agree with Mr. Aston, I'd like to go back to that. Also, I wouldn't have any problem in having a stipulation that a development this size, this type of development and the density of it, that it be required to be built within one mile of a Paulding County fire station, where there's a situation that's being built because you're talking about older people that can't get out of a development if one catches on fire. What, two, three year ago, we had that one just outside of Hare Kitchen, it damaged 12 houses before they could put it out. So I would have, I'd like to see that also.
Are there any other comments from the planning commission?
Do we need to take a look at a little bit more input before we make a decision on this? It seems like, you know, we've got some great ideas coming from maybe both sides. And, and I realize that, you know, people are developers, are in it to make money. You know, I'm in it in doing this because I want to see a beautiful Paulding County. And I want to see the home values improve and, and great people come into our county. And maybe we're rushing a little bit today to, to do this. If we could postpone and maybe have some kind of, I don't know, time to look a little bit further, talk to people, get their opinions and move forward maybe at our next meeting.
If the planning commission is not ready to issue a recommendation as given on the existing proposed draft, it is within your rights to recommend tabling this document for consideration, possibly at the next meeting. There's a limit to how long you can table, correct, Mr. Phillips?
I believe it's supposed to be to the next meeting, but...
And that may give additional time needed by staff to review the public comment portion and possibly assimilate some of those ideas. Also, comments made from the planning commission and also in consultation with the board of commissioners to ensure that the product that's subsequently going to be recommended is what the county actually wants. So I'm not going to encourage you to make a recommendation one way or the other. I'll take your motion as it comes. Board of commissioners, do you have any comments you would like to make with regard to this proposed amendment? I don't want to bias your decision, but your feedback is rather important.
You know, some of the issues, I see, one of them is like the density of the sidewalks and everything. And one, I think we have the issue with apartments, that's the, that's the density of apartments in Paulding County. A lot of the issues we've had in the past days that everybody jumps up and down about is, there are 8,000 square foot lots, you know, a lot of erosion problems, you know, 4,800 square feet by far is, in my opinion, way too small. We've had a lot of issues with 8,000. So, you know, Paulding is not the flattest piece of land in the county. There's a lot of challenges. I mean, just the one that's on 381, that's the side of the hill, I'm really interested to see how that development turns out. I mean, I don't know if there's ADA requirements on sidewalks or not inside of, you know, active adult or not, but I'm just being interested to see when that ends up being there. So, you know, I don't like the two-car, the single-car garage myself. Another issue we have is everybody wanting to do storage. have is everybody wanting to do storage. Well, smaller house, smaller amount of space that you give them, whether or not they only need one car garage or not, I mean, there's still storage there that everyone, you know, just, and then what's the chance of something, then turning into something later on, just through the police and the R-55 and active adult in this county. So, you know.
I've also had some questions about whether being an R-55 zone, does that mean no children can live in the development? Can.
No, sir.
Does it require one adult, from my understanding, and then it can be another complete family with children in the development?
The requirement allows you to restrict by age the owner of the property to 55 or older. But there's a 20% leeway that has to be given where it could be, so that you're not engaged in age discrimination to people of any age group. But that also doesn't mean that a person 55 and older couldn't buy one and then their grandpa, their grandkids may come and live with them as well. I mean, that's, it's just.
Nowadays, a lot of adult children come and live with them.
That is very true.
I think just by virtue of what's broken down here in conversation, that it's indication that we're all premature and, I think, Jimmy.
In that case, I will, at this time, if there's no further comment, I will entertain a motion with regard to the proposed text amendment. State how you wish the motion will be worded.
I make a motion to table to the July Planning and Zoning Meeting for further study and input.
So we have a motion to table by Mr. Aston till the next meeting of the Board of Planning, or the Planning Commission for further consideration and study by staff and Board of Commissioners. Do I have a second?
Yes.
I have a second from Mr. Henson. All in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one. And I thank you very much for your time in working through those issues, but at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Henson, second, by Ms. Fitzgerald.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
She had her hand up first. All in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance.